All right. Good evening. This is the January 23rd, 2023 Mendon Select Board. It is 5:00 PM. And we're going to get started. First item is to add or delete anything to the agenda. And adding to the agenda, we're going to do an update on the Homeland Security Grant, and that's to be signed by the -- that's to be signed by the Select Board. And anything else?
No.
And delete? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Homeland Security Grant.
Second.
Seth, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
Uh, no, I don't, Larry.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the agenda with the addition of the Homeland Security Grant. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Under announcements, you'll bear with me. The first one, there will be two Select Board seats open on the ballot for town meeting. One is for two years to complete a three-year term, and the second is a three-year term. Petitions signed by 1% of the voters or 10 signatures must be submitted to the town clerk by January 30th. Also, the Select Board is hiring a zoning administrator. This is a part-time position at 10 hours per week. Please submit resume and letter of interest to Sarah Tully at mendonadmin@comcast.net. There's also a planning commission vacancy. The planning commission is seeking two new members. This is the Mendon Planning Commission. The Select Board would like to thank Gary Scheeler for serving on the Mendon Planning Commission. Mr. Scheeler is not seeking reappointment in March. Gary is also a member of the Energy Committee, along with Terry Kersons and Justin Lindholm. He's probably mostly going to be stepping down for that. So there's a vacancy on the Mendon Energy Committee.
Thank you, Larry. I just had one correction with the, um, so the administrator announced that I put down there, it is eight hours, not 10 hours for the question.
How many, Sarah?
Eight.
Eight hours.
Eight, okay. All right. So the correction is eight hours per week for a zoning administrator position. Also, if I can find my notes, on January 31st this year, I will be traveling to the state Capitol to represent the Otter Creek Communication Union District. I am Mendon's rep on that. And also, I represent Otter Creek Communication Union District on Bakuda, which is the Vermont Communication Union District Association. We will have a full day in Montpelier, probably going after 4:00 PM. The plan is to be seated in the gallery of the House Chamber by 9:30 AM in anticipation of the reading of a supportive resolution on the rural broadband crisis and CUD solution when the session opens at 10:00 AM. Bakuda has requested opportunities to testify or meet with a number of committees and officials. Hopefully, there'll be a joint committee of the Senate and the House we can testify to. Again, we're expecting a full day in Montpelier to go beyond 4:00 PM. And we also have scheduling a meeting with Governor Scott. The other one is, we'll probably keep announcing this until our last meeting in February before town meeting. Town meeting this year is on March 6th, starting at, March 6th, 2023, starting at 6:00 PM. It's going to be in the VTранs conference room. The building is at 61 Valley View here in Mendon. Already mentioned this to a couple people, and they're immediately thinking of further up the road, the highway maintenance garage. The VTранs building at 61 Valley View is opposite the west end of Mendon Mountain Orchard, so it's just coming into Mendon. So we will continue. I even know that during the, when they're giving COVID test away down here at the VTранs garage, or VTранs building, excuse me, at 61 Valley View, a few people are going up further up the road, and there's miscommunication there. So we'll keep mentioning that so people know where that is. There's a bill of interest to municipalities. It's in the House. It's H44. That would allow towns with a population of 2,400 or fewer to vote to establish a local option tax. Those towns would receive, after reduction for the cost of administration, a percent of the local option tax revenue collected within the town's jurisdiction. So it's something to keep an eye on. Maybe by the end of the session, we'll see where they come with that. And I think that takes care of announcements. All right, we're down to administrative matters. Let's see. I have these in front of us. We will sign. And then Seth, these will be in the office. At your convenience to come in and sign. You so choose. We have at least two signatures, so we're good. All right, a motion. Also, there's another invoice coming in from legal fees that we finally got corrected. So at the same time, I don't know what that's going to be, but if it comes in, like approval, so that invoice can be paid. So I'll make a motion to approve the orders for $2,550 and $31,721.40, and a payroll for $9,869.72, and permission to sign the invoice for legal fees when it arrives. Do you second? Anyone second?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that it was $2,555. I believe you said $550.
All right. I want to make sure that first order, Val was correcting me. The first one was $2,555. Okay, Sarah, you've got all those. Of course, they're on the agenda.
Your attention.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Sarah Megan joined us.
Okay, Sarah. We have the minutes from January 9th, 2023. We're making a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now, we're down to public comment. We have three individuals this evening, so, okay, I guess we'll start with Megan then.
I just came to give you an update on the community center, and I think that's on the agenda later.
It is. Okay, we'll wait till then. And then Fred, you're probably here for zoning administrator and signs?
That's correct.
Okay, so those are on our agenda. Thank you for that correction. Is there any other public comment? Going once, going twice? We're down to business. Sarah, yes?
Sarah, I just interrupted. Lisa happens to be there, and she did the first snowshoe Saturday for the rec department this Saturday, and I just wanted to thank her for that. And if she had any comments about practice to the Select Board, it'll all go down.
All right.
It went awesome. We had three people. We had snow, so that was the biggest challenge, and we had it. And we had a great time, and I recommend you come on out.
Okay. It is again this weekend, or when's the next one?
This weekend.
Okay.
The 28th at the rec field at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, okay.
Are snowshoes provided? I don't remember. I'm sorry.
No, they're not. But we do have a ski snowshoe shop here in Mendon, high altitude, and they do rent them.
Oh, great.
Okay.
You can also check with the Roman Free Library, because there's opportunity to check them out as well from the library.
Correct. Yeah. And you're going to have some more snow to practice this weekend, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you ordered this or where it came from.
I did.
We are blaming, okay. Thank you. Gary is thanking you. I actually got a caller in Southern New Hampshire. Someone was asking if we had some shoes for youth, but they were there with our grandkids, so. All right. So I thank you for doing this and, you know, working on that grant with Sarah, and this is, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Yep. So did you use the trails there? What was your first, what was your actual?
We used the Mendon Trail.
Yep.
Mendon Trail, yeah. Good. And we used the baseball field.
Very good. Okay. So the update on our ARPA funds, we want to make sure that we've had the right motions, and if there's anywhere missing that we've decided to allocate ARPA funds towards, that we have a motion for that. So we all have this list. So so far, the ARPA funding that came to the town, which went into a separate fund, Of that, so far, we have bought the folding chairs that we use for town meeting. We have approved the hybrid meeting software, which is the OWL software. We have approved the continuing digitization of land records. In the Highway Improvement Fund, to reduce the amount of the budget and the percentage, we have allocated $50,000 for road paving. The town office generator, which we've been looking at for a long time, we have a grant we're waiting to hear from, which is a 50% award. We don't know what that's going to be yet, but we know a ballpark on that generator, if we didn't have the grant, would be around $15,000. So at this point, we're setting that money aside, should we not get the grant. Playground, recreation area, Lisa, we have allocated $50,000 for that, and then the Recreation Committee can use, look for grants, and we also have a reserve fund. And then I'll go back to Sarah. And then the structure over the diesel tank, we need to actually, that's a requirement we have set aside at this point, 5,000. We're waiting to hear what the cost of that's going to be to make sure that's enough. And so we have a total, but I'm not sure that's totally up to date. We talked about vault upgrades, which is map cabinets and roller shelving. We haven't made a motion on that one. So I'm just going down the list. We have several we've gone over recently at the town highway garage. No actions taken on those yet. All right, so.
Can I just correct that? Mary, did we make a decision on the water system at the garage?
We haven't. We talked about it, but we haven't. So that's.
Okay.
On the agenda. So according to my records, and Val, back me up on this one. Motion-wise, the folding chairs goes back all the way before last year's meeting. That's over a year ago, so that's already done. We had a motion, to my knowledge, for the hybrid meeting software, the digitization, the Highway Improvement Fund, that's the $50,000. The, now, after that, now the town office generator, and the question, do we have a motion on town office generator, the playground? And I don't believe we moved on the structure over the diesel tank, just to catch up on that first column that we have. Sarah, do you have a record on what we made the motions on?
Yeah, and they're documented on that spreadsheet. So I only have motions on the three that are noted.
Oh, you can, date approved.
With the improvement, folding chairs, and the hybrid software. We had a motion for the town office generator, but it goes to apply for the grant, not necessarily the pay for it out of our code fund.
All right, so under date approved, we've got the folding chairs, hybrid meeting software, and highway improvement. All right, so we need a motion on the rest. So let's just start with that first column, if we're all in agreement to do everything else here.
Sure.
Okay. All right, Seth, you staying with us? Does, I don't know if Seth has this same chat we're looking. So Seth, we need a motion, which I'll make in a minute, on hybrid meeting software, which I think Nancy is going to order or has ordered. The digitization of land records, that's actually continuation. That's, that's a $50,000 estimate. The OWL software was $1,000.
So, Mary, the OWL software already had a motion that was made up September 26th.
I got it. I'm sorry, Sarah. All right, you got it. All right, so the motion would be, let's start over again, to approve ARPA money to be allocated towards the height, we already, the digitization of land records. The town office generator, that's $15,000. The playground structure for the recreation area, in the amount of $50,000. And the structure over the diesel tank at the town highway garage, which is required by code, we've allocated here 5,000. So I'll make the motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Is there any discussion on those, on that first column? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion, those motions pass, that motion passes. So now, we're down to the next column to see what the Select Board wants to do, if they want to do it at this time. First one is vault upgrades, which would be the map cabinet and roller shelving. That's estimated, these are all estimates, estimated to be $15,000. Going down what we have here. Humidity control is on halt because Nancy has ordered a humidifier, de-humidifier, excuse me. Want to put a D in front of that humidifier. It's the last thing they need in there, is humidity. The cybersecurity, she's already, that's, that's here. She's got a grant to see what we need for cybersecurity. Okay, now we're down to, I think we're kind of on hold as to what we're going to do at the town garage. So what's scheduled here is, you know, we recently had a meeting down there to go over this with Bill. Town garage storage shed, that's the existing building that we have, which was our old salt shed. We have repairs and enclosure of that, but we have no amount, so we can't act on that. Town garage water system, so at current, there's a lot of iron in the water. This would be a filtration system, and that's in the amount of estimate of $1,400. There was an additional garage bay with no funding towards that yet, or amount, no estimate. And also a salt shed expansion. That's an estimate here of $250,000. That would have to be a bond if that ever went through, but we can't do the salt shed and a garage expansion. And a garage generator, which didn't come under that other funding, and that's for $15,000. This is all ARPA money. That's that column. So the only thing I can see right now, until we have further discussion and more information on, regarding the highway garage, is the town garage water system, estimated at $1,400. We already did the structure over the diesel tank. That's been passed. Okay. Now, now it's time for discussions. Is there anything else we're ready to add at this time, or, of course, the ones we don't have an estimate, or we certainly can't act on those, but, or we can decide to.
The only thing that we haven't cracked up here is with is the balance of the reserve funds, and what is, what monies are available to pay for some of these projects through the, you know, garage maintenance fund, or preservation fund, or, like, the computer that town office, um, knew of, but.
All right. So if we can gather all that information for the next meeting, first meeting in February. During our tour of the town garage, it was brought up about, there's a couple places there where we had lights with fluorescent bulbs, to upgrade those with LED lights. There was some checking that would have to be done with Efficiency Vermont to see what funding is available. Also, it didn't come out at that meeting, but it's caught my attention recently, that some towns have installed or are installing dash cams on their plow trucks, just to cover the drivers, should something happen, and or somebody cut in front of them. I had mentioned that to Bill and asked him to get back to me if that's anything that they would be interested in. All right. Seth, is there anything else I'm missing that we should act on? I mean, we probably have to do some of these at the next meeting to check out reserve funds. The only thing that's catching my point, if we are in agreement, and I don't know if we are, about the town garage water system, that would be a filtration system estimated at $1,400 to take the iron out. I don't know if we're interested in that or not. Or we can wait until next meeting and do these all at the same time.
I don't, I just don't know what, when we were talking about the water system, the level of importance that he had put on that.
So the, let's see. The air exchange system, we crossed out, that is not required. The other expansions are huge. There's a lot of research to get into those. All right, so while we, I'll contact Bill again on the water system to see what priority that has, and then wait for more information, and I guess we'll look at this in February. So Lisa, go ahead.
Sorry. What did we decide for the generator? Did we?
We didn't. Seth? We're talking about the generator for the town garage. The estimate was $15,000. Our discussion, we, well, we didn't, we certainly didn't make any decisions there because it was informational meeting, but we're just wondering what priority Bill had regarding the generator at the town garage. You recall any priority he might have had?
Well, I'm not sure about Bill, and I think with our discussion, I do feel that that generator would definitely be a necessity eventually here, given that that is our emergency backup.
Backup.
No, the backup, emergency building.
Yeah.
Backup to the town office. So obviously, if there was an emergency or something that was that type of situation, it may be in the situation where we wouldn't have. So I do feel that that's pretty important, the generator. Also, the water filtration, I think that's important as well.
All right, so currently, what they use for a generator is their welder, and that runs on gasoline. The new garage generator would be running on propane. And those are usually set up automatically, so they come on once a week to exercise, which they recommend for any generator. So.
I mean, this may be something that we could be revisiting, very absolutely, the generator, because we do have one that does work at the moment. I just feel like some point, it should be addressed. I just feel like some point should be addressed, that's something that runs more than like six hours of fuel.
All right, so we have two options. The water system filtration and the town generator have caught our interest. We have two options, we can act on those now, make motions, or we can do it all at our next meeting. Hopefully, we get some more information and some priorities from Bill. So at this point, since there's no rush on this, why don't we wait two weeks, gather some more information? Including contacting Efficiency Vermont on the garage lights, and to see if Bill has any interest in dash cams. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, Clara, I just want to make one correction to the list that you're looking at today. And Seth, they'll be running your mailbox at the town office, because I updated the list from our site visit the other day, but I erroneously shut, or crossed out the air purification system at the town office, and I should have crossed out the air exchange system at the town garage. While we are site visiting, I contacted the LCT, our insurance carrier, and they don't, they have no recommendations regarding requirements for air exchange system at the town garage, so that, we discussed that being revoked from the list if it wasn't going to be required. And the LCT also provided us information from the agency of natural resources that gives us guidance on what is required to be the structure over the diesel tank.
Okay.
So that's been provided to Bill as well.
So on our list dated January 17th, 2023, we don't have air purification system town office crossed out. We still have that in for three thousand. And I think during our site visit, I crossed out the air exchange. I might have done that recently when you sent the email out saying it's not required.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Yeah, okay. You have the same list I do?
Um, I do, yes.
Okay, all right, so we're good. Also, Seth, if you're going to be catching up on everything, some of our ARPA money, it's up to the select board, starting in March, but I, we use some of the ARPA money again for our town budget, which we'll be getting into in a minute. I have recommended saving a chunk of money should you need to do the same thing during the next budget cycle to reduce the increase in the budget. That'll be up to, not me. All right, we have two permits here, fireworks and burn permit ordinance, we're going to start with fireworks. And I know Fred has worked on this.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mind you leaving out those two items in the notes first, so that Megan can do the community center, if you can alter the order.
Okay, so I do not have a problem with that. So the other two select board members, do you have any issue with switching out under business B and D?
No.
Okay, Seth, you okay switching those around?
Yeah.
Okay. Community Center, Megan Smith.
I just wanted to say thank you for what you agreed to, and my absence, the putting of, it's on the ballot, correct?
Uh, it's-
For the ten thousand dollars.
It's going to be an article on our warning for town meeting night.
For town meeting night?
Yes.
Okay. I did do a report for Mendon on the Move for Sarah, for the town report, just saying that we are, we have shifted away from the idea of building on our existing property and looking at places along Route Four, existing structures along Route Four.
Okay.
Is how I, I thought.
Nothing specific, just a general looking, yes, good.
So that said, I think you will, I was wondering, I'm sending out a message to everybody on the Mendon on the Move list, because we want to resurrect the beautification committee, and I want to ask people if, see if anybody is interested, see who would be interested in that. But I'm wondering if it would be all right in that email that I mentioned that this is going to be warranted at the town meeting for the community center? Should I just not mention anything about the community center? Probably just leave that separate. I mean, it'd be, because really, the email is really about the beautification committee, so I think I should-
Keep them separate, yeah.
Okay. And I am not going to be able to be at town meetings, so I'm going to have Patty Lancaster speak to the community center generally.
Some talking points, basically the update of coming from Mendon on the Move up to where you are now.
Yeah, without specifics about everything we've been doing, just because we, you know, we don't want speculation, I guess.
Right. And again, we appreciate all the work your committee has done, I mean, that's, yeah, well, I can imagine, yeah, working on something like this.
You know, I've been talking to people up in Montpelier about different grants, and, you know, I still think it's doable without us having to come up with any more money than the ten thousand would be for a grant match.
Right, exactly, and that'll be part of the presentation, so.
Right. So I just want to say thank you, and I will now put Mr. Megan to his spot.
All right, thanks again for all your work you've done, Megan.
Be good.
Just before Megan leaves, which is kind of our house, Claudia.
What do you need?
Clara, do you just want to talk to her about doing this presentation at town meetings?
She addressed it, but go ahead, Megan.
I just explained to them that I am not going to be able to be there that night, that I'm going to have Patty Lancaster do a talking, very just general talking points about it. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Let's see what that article actually says. When we get to it, it'll be Article Three. Shall the town vote to create a community center reserve fund and appropriate ten thousand dollars? That's what, at this point, that's what the wording will say. All right, now, we're back to fireworks. Let me just give an update before Fred jumps in here. We have a current ordinance relating to the use of fireworks within the town of Mendon dated October ninth, 2018. And Seth, you're involved in this one. There was a few things we're trying to clean up here. We all looked at this, and Fred has submitted a few things. Right now, everything kind of reads okay until we get down to the actual permit application. And I'll start with A, a person seeking to use discharge, ignite, fire, or display fireworks within the town of Mendon shall submit a permit application to the Mendon Fire Warden, or the Mendon Constable, or other town official designated by the Fire Warden. This application shall be made on a form prepared by the town of Mendon and shall be submitted at least fifteen days in advance of the intended fireworks display date. First thing on there is, you know, we see a communication issue. Should it just, this is all for discussion, should it just be the Mendon Constable that issues this? Because if the Constable issues this, the Fire Warden doesn't know about it, that causes a communication problem, or if it's just the opposite, the Fire Warden issues it and the Constable doesn't know about it, and one of the other gets a phone call, it creates confusion. And also, it goes on to other town official designated by the Fire Warden. I kind of cross that out, because the two people, individuals that should be involved in this are the Constable and Fire Warden. By putting this on to another town official, we don't have the expertise really the other two do, so by some reason, if you didn't get a permit from the Fire Warden or the Constable at that point, by default, you don't have a permit. So the first thing up for discussion would be, who actually submits the permit? Is it one or the other, or is it both? That has to be cleared up. And then the other thing, how far in advance can you do this? It says you have to be within, shall be submitted at least fifteen days, but if there's an organization or business in town that's doing long-range planning, and someone wants fireworks, how far in advance can they do that? And then in the end, even though a Constable issued a permit way in advance, we still have to have something in there within a certain amount of time, the Fire Warden has to step in here, just in case there's some kind of an issue with dry conditions. I guess we'll start with air before we read all the others. So that's up for discussion, and Fred, I don't know if you want to start and jump in on that one, or where you want to jump in, so, for yours.
On the, whether the, a third person should be designated, just seems on the surface to complicate communication issues even more, especially since there doesn't appear to be a central registry in the town office where the Constable and the Fire Warden would enter the information on the same page or the same Excel sheets or whatever, so having a figure of third person who could issue it, I can't imagine any urgency or emergency situation where the Fire Warden would have to find somebody else other than the Constable if he or she were out of town. But I would just support having only two people who could do that. And then Seth would know better than I would, somebody could get a fireworks permit in January, for the Fourth of July, so many drought conditions appear, and they still have a fireworks permit. And I don't know what the right timing for when that last inspection would have to be, you know, a week, two weeks? Fireworks permits are not, it's not like, on one hand, they're not like, somebody wants to burn a pile of wood, a brush, where they can do it Tuesday, they can do it next Friday, they could do it whenever conditions allow fireworks, so generally around an event, Fourth of July, a wedding, something long scheduled, so you'd hate to take things, put it off three days until it rains. But on the other hand, there has to be some provision that's an extreme level, where you just have to mix it. So I just, I just suggested some, some framework there, but I don't pretend to know the correct one.
Okay, I don't know if, Sarah and Seth, did you get most of that? So what's been brought up here? An event organizer is planning a fireworks display, we'll just say in July, but they need to plan ahead, because whoever is, say, renting the facility or using the facility wants to know way in advance. So just say the permit is granted, we'll just say in March or a July event. At some point, where does the Fire Warden step in on this? If you're hiring a professional to come in and do this event, fireworks display, you can't cancel it two or three days before, that's not fair to to the contractor doing the fireworks, or to the event itself. So we, trying to get around how we do that.
And there may be penalties if you, you know, you cancel it within a certain period of time. I'm sure the Fire Warden's manager, the last thing they want to do is get sued, or you know, for the house to get ignited in the process, but, so I'm sure they're well aware of this, but I-
And there's another issue there, so a professional coming in is going to, I would imagine is going to do a fire watch. They know how to do this, and they're going to stay on the permit, but a regular resident getting a permit and, you know, buys a certain amount of fireworks, gets the permit, that fire watch may not actually happen. If something happens and there is a fire, then they're on the hook. That's spelled out on the ordinance, so. Seth, I want to throw this at you, so the scenario is there's going to be a fireworks event, doesn't matter where, in July, so they need to get a permit. Should the permit come from the Constable and the Fire Warden, or one or the other? And if so, how close to the actual date of the event does the Fire Warden kick in saying, yes, it's a go, or no, because of dry conditions, it's not?
Well, okay, so I think, I think the Constable, I don't actually think could issue these fireworks permits. Honestly, for many different reasons, if somebody's calling to complain about that, usually they're not calling the ambulance, they're going to call, if, police on that, deal with the sounds and, you know, whatever's going on there. I do, you know, I feel that if the Constable gives a permit, the Fire Warden should be notified one way or another. And as far as, like, how far out?
That's tough.
Clara, I think we would know within, I mean, how far out would a professional company need to know, and so let's ask that. I mean, we're going to go through the qualifications, but first, we're going to time it in there, okay? Say two weeks, three weeks? You know, if it's a professional company that is doing the display, you know, I feel pretty comfortable saying, you know, it's on that. Do you agree on that?
Yeah, I'm not worried about a professional, but we can't designate that here in the ordinance, because, you know, anyone that has a permit can do the fireworks. I don't think it's a huge problem in town, but it's still, it required, an ordinance came out of this to- So just the way to look at this, I would say, I would agree with you that the Constable should be the one issuing the permit with no default. If you don't get a permit from the Constable to display fireworks, you don't have a permit. But either an internal document or in this ordinance, the Fire Warden has to be notified or given a copy of the permit. And then there would have to be something that final approval, this is going to be the difficult one, because your timing, the final approval or disapproval, that's not the right word, would, could come from the Fire Warden. Now, it's the timetable, you can't do this a day ahead of time. If it's, if, you know. So basically, the Constable would be the one that, this is just proposal, would be the one that issues the permit. And so now, we'd have to word this to how the Fire Warden gets involved in this.
All right. Well-
Let's see, the-
I almost say, if it's a, if it's a professional company that's doing- I almost say, if it's a professional company that's doing it, they got pretty much, aside from some sort of crazy weather patterns or super high, completely dry conditions, they would be fine. If it's somebody, just a citizen of whatever, of town, they should be able to, I mean, they should be able to tell them, I'm too busy for that. I mean, the...
So for purposes of an ordinance, I mean, we can't be, we can't really write in a section if it's being done by professional versus a non-professional. So if we did, under A, a person seeking to use discharge, ignite, fire, or display fireworks within the town of Mendon shall submit a permit application to the Mendon constable with notification going to the Mendon fire warden. And then from there, you need some kind of sentencing of... I don't know where you go from there. So you've got, a permit has been...
We know, sorry.
I mean, we can still work on this, but a permit has been issued by the constable, the fire warden has been notified, but now you have the issue, as the date approaches, there's two things. If a fire happens as a result of the fireworks display, that's on whoever ignited the fireworks.
You could, Larry, you could flip it, if the constable notifies the fire warden as part of the routine, you could then flip it to the fire warden and say, okay, you now know there's a fireworks permit scheduled for 42 days from now. It's now on the fire warden to check in 32, 22, 12 days, and they could go ahead and less the fire warden pulls it. So instead of flipping it on the applicant that they have to get a new permission, it's not... I mean, I can't speak for Seth, but I'm guessing if I go to Seth and say, I want to burn tomorrow in the snow, he's going to say, okay, if he's an applicant. If I say, I want a burn permit for August, he's not going to grant it, right? But he might, he might grant it in August if it's okay burn conditions. He will grant it if it's okay burn conditions, if it's anything. But he also has the right to yank it, right, at the last minute if there's high winds.
That's what I think.
So...
I mean, if it's dangerous, it's dangerous. That's why, that's why you have put this...
So we can add a sentence. Again, we're just going to do the constable. The fire warden may cancel the fireworks display...
Due to dangerous conditions?
Absolutely.
Up until the day of the event?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have that in your ordinance, so whoever, if it's a professional company, they know ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can't write the ordinance, okay.
Either it's not drunk conditions, if it's blowing 60 knots, 60 miles an hour.
Okay, well, you had some wording there. So I got the fire warden may cancel the fireworks display...
Due to hazardous conditions or unsafe weather.
Yeah, and then they could come in on the town monitor.
All right, Seth, I'm going to read this to you, and we need, we need the wording towards the end. All right, we're at a point now where the constable is going to issue, is the only one that can issue the permit. The next sentence, the fire warden may cancel, the fire warden may cancel the fireworks display due to...
Unsafe weather.
Unsafe? How would you word unsafe? Seth, you still there?
Dangerous weather conditions, yeah.
Well, what was that? Due to, is it unsafe weather, is it due to...
Unsafe or hazardous conditions. Unsafe or hazardous conditions. I suppose the fire warden, the fire warden is supposed to have some language.
I know, I don't know.
Yeah, and sometimes the state actually issues, you know, burn, but I don't know how it works with fireworks.
Yeah, your condition disorder.
Unsafe, due to...
Unsafe conditions might come up.
Okay, unsafe, okay. I'm going to read this to you, Seth.
Yep.
"A person seeking to use discharge, ignite, fire, or display fireworks within the town of Mendon shall submit a permit application to the Mendon constable." And then it goes on, "The applicant shall be made on a form prepared by the town of Mendon and shall be submitted at least 15 days in advance of the intended fireworks display date. The fire warden may cancel the fireworks display due to unsafe conditions." We're not going to put any timetable on that because that gets messy.
Or up until the day of the event. So they really know. Or unsurprised.
I think that's all. I think, uh... There is...
We're losing, Seth. You're cutting in and out. Sarah, I want to read this back to you. "The fire warden may cancel the fireworks display..."
Well, I think we definitely have to keep our authority available for this situation because, you know, highway duty, or...
So we're in agreement?
My life suggests that we just present this draft to Seth.
Okay.
We can present this draft to Seth and, um, I'd like to make a recommendation that he reach out to Lardland, the regional fire warden, just to get his expertise on the timing, as well as if he's run into this situation in other towns and what they're doing about it, in order to create a final draft.
All right. I mean, this is a working...
Absolutely.
Working draft here anyways. And then also Fred, in his email, under D, "An approved display shall not begin before the hour of 7:00 a.m., nor extend past the hour of 10:30 p.m." Fred was questioning that seven should be 7:00 p.m.
I assume that was a typo.
No, I think those dates were included just to match the same date as the New Ordinance, or the same time as the New Ordinance.
So someone's not setting off fireworks in the day practicing to see if they work?
Uh, I see.
Okay, we'll leave that.
Sometimes they set them off just to hear the booms. They don't have to be after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And Larry, there was a paragraph in there about fines and so forth, which included imprisonment and stuff. I'm assuming that came from some state statute. And, but I suggested some language about being courteous and notify your neighbors if they're going to have to play fireworks display. I think it'd be hard to put somebody in jail if they don't notify their neighbors.
Yeah, we just didn't know how we could ever write that in an ordinance. How do you do the math on radius, so...
Scratch all that.
All right. The $800 fine for each violation is in here. So I think, again, this is a fairly recent document, we're just down to, at this point we're in agreement, the constable will be the one to issue the permit, and then a sentence about the fire warden can cancel the fireworks display due to unsafe conditions or up until the day of the event. We'll work on the wording of that, checking other ordinances. And, okay, I think that's it.
It exists in Word on my computer. I checked, you'd like to take your scribbles home and rework it and send it back like your notes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get that draft to Seth so that he can go over it with Lardland and see if he has anything to look...
Yeah, I can send it to Seth.
As far as the timing goes.
I can incorporate this into the...
And I think we lost... We lost Seth for a second, so, yeah, Fred, if you want to take us back, updating that, and then send it to me, I'll distribute it to everybody.
All right, the state statutes regarding fireworks is part of this, and actually that's actually part of the written permit information. And then the other question was, someone fills this out and gets it in, they have to get a copy back with a permit number. We want to make sure that, I think that's displayed here. Okay, right now we have the, what, the fire warden and the constable can either approve or reject such application. An approved permit may be issued if the fire warden and our constable determine that proposed display. Uh, that's not it. Okay, so, all right, we'll do this as a draft and clean it up.
Is it the fee of...
I had a comment here for you, Fred, but...
The fee of 800 is to cover the cost of a fire, if fire trucks were, is that correct?
Maybe that's the same for fire.
Yeah, well, no, this actually, no, let me read it. "A person who shall violate this ordinance by using discharge, igniting, firing, or displaying fireworks within the town amendment without first obtaining a permit hereunder shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined not more than $800." So that's different than the fire department. You shoot them off without a permit, you can be fined $800, or shall be. Or, right, Fred, "or imprisoned for not more than 30 days or both. Violators may be issued a municipal violation ticket by the Mendon constable to be administered by Vermont Judicial Bureau." Oop, that gets your attention?
I think, Larry, you heard with that language in there, tonight, I had a copy of it, you can walk away.
That's leaning on the phone.
Uh...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep?
I'll send it to Sarah. Yeah, that's...
Once all Fred updates that and sends it to me, we'll send it to you to see if you have any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So now we got the burn permit. Move that one aside for a minute. And Seth, you're involved in this one. Because in, we, there was something that, we recently had an incident in town where there was a brush being burnt without a permit. Someone called the fire department, the city fire department, and they responded, and anytime that happens, we are billed $750. And we want to update our permit so that reflects that charge up to $800, which would cover the fire department's cost to the town. Tax payers should not be paying that for an illegal burn without a permit, and also the paperwork involved for both the fire warden and/or the constable. And under our ordinance, the town of Mendon, we have to pay the Rutland Fire Department $500, and that's because this is an outdated policy, it goes back to August 20th, 2001. But on the second page, under B, "If the fire department responds to the fire, the amount then charged by the fire department to the town of Mendon for responding to the fire according to any agreement, fire according to any agreement or other assignment than an effect." But then under, it just says, "Commencing on or about September 1st, 2001," that amount will be $500. But, go back to that sentence, "If the fire department responds to the fire, the amount then charged by the fire department to the town, which in this case is $750, for responding to the fire according to any agreement or other arrangement than an effect." So if I'm reading that right, we can charge, at this point, whatever the city of Rutland is charging us, not the $500. Am I reading that right? You have the copy?
Yeah, it was still to be beneficial to clarify to make sure that the statutory maximum of $800 is specified to cover the...
To cover this, right. And then it's spelled out here, but it could be a little clearer of why we actually have the permit, the burn permit required year-round. Doesn't matter if there's snow on the ground, still need the permit. If somebody kindles a brush fire without a permit, somebody sees the smoke, they call the fire department, the fire department dispatcher looks, does not see a permit in that area, they have to send a fire truck, and that's $750 right now. The permit eliminates that. A person gets the burn permit, has given the location, the fire warden has sent that down to the city of Rutland Fire Department. Someone calls in that same fire, the dispatcher looks, sees a permit, it's in that area, and they can now say that's a permitted fire. The fire department has a phone number if they want to check to see if it's still under control. That's the whole reason for getting that permit, to avoid the city of Rutland sending a truck when it doesn't need to go and charging the taxpayers $750, which is reasonable. So the other thing, Seth, we have to take this burn permit, right now, if you look at the actual ordinance, under E, it says, "No more than two hours prior to commencing the fire, the perma-te shall notify the fire department and the forest fire warden of the fact that the fire will be commenced within two hours." All right, that's not the way you handle it. Once you issue a permit, once a permit has been submitted, correct me if I'm wrong, if they have not heard back from you, they have the go-ahead to kindle the fire. But our ordinance goes back to, I think, a previous fire warden who, before you kindle the fire, you had to call him to get the final permission. So that one needs to be worked on. In that...
Larry, is that what? Larry, I think you've... But, uh, good for, just to say?
Seth, we can't, we can't hear you. You're breaking up.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, hold on just a second. I can say that? Okay. How about now?
We got, we can hear you.
No, there are the dogs.
Yeah, we can hear you right now.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear your...
All right.
No, you're right.
Okay, so what I've been saying to people is, um, okay, great, great. So what I've been telling people as they apply for burn permits, I just say...
We lost you.
I don't want to make...
Seth, you're breaking up, so...
Yeah.
We could do this by email.
Yeah, we'll do this by email. Yeah, Seth, we're going to do this by email because you're breaking up.
Um, Larry, hi. I'm going to suggest that Seth and I get together and make some adjustments that we discussed here, we did this one, and he can also take that to Lardland for further comments if there was anything on the state level that you're concerned about, in order to present another draft that is likely... in order to present another draft in this line work on the deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then. Yeah.
Okay, one more comment together, Seth.
While you're doing that, Sarah, under the current ordinance, first line, is, uh, this is an ordinance relating to the requirement of receiving a permit for any outdoor burning in the town of Menden. Previous fire warden stated at some point, I think it was to someone I was talking to, that even a fire pit, which is outdoor burning, would require a permit. Let's get that cleared up, if it's just a burning brush. So that, because it says that in the first line, and then it goes down talking about burning brush. Okay.
Again, I'll be sure that, um, Seth has a copy of that as well as, um, making these changes. We can review your comments. He'll be able to go back and review your comments from, um, from the video recording.
Okay.
I can see, I can, I can hear you guys break up too, so.
Okay, good.
Well, we're not starting over, Seth. You're good, we're good.
I apologize to you guys. I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, we're moving on to, under business C, zoning administrator. And Fred has some information or request regarding, I'm guessing, signs.
As we all know, there's a number of derelict businesses on Route four, and they have derelict signs. Our zoning regulations say that business has been out of operation for nine months. Both the sign, the lettering on the sign board, and the sign plaza, I take meaning the structure holding up the sign, have to be removed, and if not, it's a violation. If a violation is not resolved within seven days, it's a two hundred dollar fine per day until it's resolved. And the town may remove the sign and bill the owner and reason for possibly removing the sign. All that's in Article seven, section seven oh four of the zoning regs. And I just, I would keep it brief tonight. Larry, because this is gonna be an ongoing problem and maybe a continuing item on your agenda. But, two years ago, based on, sorry, one year ago, three hundred sixty-three days ago, our interim zoning administrator at the time issued two sign violations up on Route four. She did not get any particular response, or at least there's nothing in the file, nor any emails that either department responded in writing. I think Jesse got some communication verbally with some of them, especially the Snow Angel owner that was under new ownership, they were looking to remodel, redo it, and was in a hurry about dating out this sign. Where they would do it, once the snow was gone, they'd do it in the spring, and so forth, and then about when the change in administrators and passage of time, the signs are still there. So there's just an unresolved issue. It's one of those things that are in our zoning, along with, I suppose, other places where you can find people, they violate stuff, and then how you collect the fines, you take it to court. It's the issue that goes across areas more than just signs. But, it is still pretty clear that these zoning violations went out. If I notify the, the, um, the people who have the violation, and they don't respond again, then by rights, the town, or whatever the town is, can remove them. Who does it? On behalf of the town. It's pretty much by default, the road crew. I did speak to Bill Ellis when I saw him on the road the other day about it, and he said, you know, we can do it, we have the equipment that can make out signs and lean them up against the building. But, taking town equipment on private property, how much notification do you have to give to a private property owner that they're in violation, and you're gonna carry out the violation by removing a sign? It's all pretty vague. And I wouldn't say Bill is unwilling to do it time permitting, but he's not willing to do it unless the legal logistical things can sort out, and it's not clear in the regs. Obviously, it would be preferable if I could work with these people issued citations. Ironically, just today, the owner of Snow Angel called the office, saying, hey, we're thinking of doing some stuff, are we? First see that they lateral the phone call, because I was sitting at my desk with a poor friend. And I did my best to answer his questions, but I did bring out the sign issued, and said, kind of be useful if you're coming back to the town for zoning permits, if you clean up some issues that we have with your property. Right now, so I'm taking the work with these people, but I just, I think going on, if I get a, if my courtesy letters don't get a response, or if they get a, or not interested in complying response, then I would have to come back to the select board, I think, to say, who, who would you authorize? And under whose legal jurisdiction is going on private property and pop the sign out of the ground? Bring it behind the buildings, or how is one to do that? Pretty clear it's never been done in town. So whether this is something Vermont Leagues and Cities and Town would give advice on, town attorney, I, I don't need an answer tonight, because I don't think I've exhausted my, um, you know, my communications with these owners, and there's more. There's other signs up there that would fall into this category, the Flannel's sign is technically in violation, the Old Redwood Einstein is in violation, there's other signs that are in violation. And I would prefer to work with them amicably. But, we still have regulations that appear to be ignored, will probably ignore it, but we do. And then the other, because our, all of our signs, if they're gonna be lit, have to have external lighting, because a lot of these have power cords and conduit running through them, which you assume is dead, but, you know, you don't know if there's some stray electrical current running up the some derelict light fixtures without signs, so it's not just, and I can't authorize the road crew go up and do this, only the select board can do it. So I just want to put this back under radar, and I'll keep you appraised as soon as I respond to that yet.
You know, my experience, just for me, the eight years, a little plus I've been on, this is kind of uncharted territory for us, because we've never done this before, or at least since I've been on the board. So you just brought up like a hundred questions. First of all, according to your, your information you gave us, that if they're nine months out of business, then that zoning reg steps in that they are, if not in compliance, or they're in violation, rather, after nine months out of business?
That's correct.
Okay.
Nine consecutive months from the date of non-use of the particular term.
Okay, and then the violations, and you may not even know this, that have been sent out, do we have any notification, verification that they were actually received by the property owner? Or they, just something that went in the mail, or?
They didn't go on registered mail, they went out first-class mail. One of them, the Snow Angel, I believe that is only, I heard that there was some verbal communication with the owners. The Ailvice, which is the other sign violation up there, I don't know, I figured, there's nothing in there in their zoning folders that indicated there was some communication. So, and I don't want to put Jesse Bridge on the spot and try to, you know, drill her memory blow, but if it didn't happen, I would just prefer to send out the letters saying, hey, we want to work with you on this. If one went strictly, there'd be seventy-two thousand dollars in fines, three hundred sixty-three days and two hundred bucks a day. You know, so we want, we want to work with property owners, but we have to see some reciprocal interest on their part of working with us, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to get the signs out, but you're right, they have a zoning violation. It was issued first-class mail, we don't know if they received it. There needs to be something that we know they received it, and then, whatever your ordinance says, after so many days, you get fines that are gonna accumulate, there's an incentive for them to do something. Eventually, it gets up to a huge amount of money that's owed to the town. Does that go in their file, and should there ever be a transition of that property? Does the town receive their money at that point? Which, yeah. Again, you hit on it, you want a legal opinion before any action was taken. You're talking about going on private property, taking the sign down, liability issues, electrical, whatever, if it's still hitched up. Do you need a right-of-way to get on somebody's property? What are you gonna do with the sign after?
And I'm assuming these signs are on private property, I'm assuming they're not going to go highway right-of-way and just suck the state down and force it. Obviously, you'd use it to take it down if it was in the state right-of-way, but that requires surveys and everything, so.
You know, the ideal situation is, is communication with the property owner saying they're in violation. Here's what they're looking at down the road for penalties, and it is in your best interest for you to contract removing the sign. And again, if our road crew just said they could do it, and all the legal opinions and everything was granted, including permission from the select board, if they couldn't do it, then we have to contract that out. And then that's another whole thing of insurance regulations and putting it out to bid if it's going to be over a certain amount, so it's messy.
I don't think the road crew is eager to get into signing them around. But, I also don't know if you can contract with somebody to go up and book one of them is a, probably concrete-filled steel posts with a wooden structure, one of them is an exclusive wooden structure. The steel post would be hard to, you know, make out of the ground. I would not, you could just attend their job, and then are you responsible? Would the town respond for disposing of the something, or can you just hide it behind the buildings?
If you dispose of it, that'd be part of the, the cost per disposal.
And then even then, if the property owner doesn't have to pay you, you can take it to court if you want. So, just so you know, it's, it's an ongoing issue, and it's part of the larger trying to make the road crew look aesthetically pleasing and welcoming and proper.
Correct.
Part of that larger.
And then you need clarification on your site ordinance, if it specifically states the sign must be removed. Maybe you're not supposed to touch the structure, the steel or something, taking that out. You're talking about just the sign, is the post, steel, whatever, is that part of the sign? Or is the sign a separate?
It says includes the physical structure thereof,
Okay.
which I would interpret to be the wooden support or that's the post support. But it's, again, as Bill said, from a backhoe standpoint, it's five minutes, most likely yanked out of the ground. But, if you got an angry, he's encountered angry property owners and other issues where he's doing city work on the edges of their private property and their blizzard and threatening and whatnot, so we don't want to put him, we don't have to have the constable up there receiving it.
Or, you don't want to be doing damage to the property? All you gotta do is leave tire tracks or something, and then, I mean, it's a mess, you got a messy situation here.
So I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, we can't give any guidance, it's just new to us, but, yeah, keep us posted and.
And the other thing I was gonna ask is, Sarah, with, as well, who can contact the Vermont Leagues and Cities and Towns on behalf of the town for guidance on this? Is that something only the select board can do? Is Sarah the one with the access? Or can I contact them, or who would I contact, or is that not even?
So.
You can't contact the LCT on behalf of even appointed, um, official for Menden. They will ask you what your role is in Menden, and you, when you say you're a zoning administrator, they only allow you to ask zoning questions. But you just have to call their number and say, you have some zoning questions to interpret, you know, how to enforce the zoning regulations.
Sarah, thank you.
All right, thank you Fred for stepping in and doing this, and you got, you got a messy one there, but we knew this was coming. Thanks. Okay, so we've done ordinances, the signs, the community center. We are down to E, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed municipal budget. I don't know if, oh, here's the update, I'm sorry, I didn't look at that. If Seth has the budget in front of him. So Seth, we've been working on this, and I've lost track of the number of drafts. I think it's beyond six, we've been going back and forth with inflation and everything, so we've been working on getting our budget down to make sure it was under three percent. I hit my notes. Our current budget, proposed municipal budget at this point in time, coming out of our last meeting, is at one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And that's an increase over our current budget of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our current budget, which approved last March, of course, was a two-point seven percent increase, and then at this one, no, we're looking at a two-point seven percent increase, this proposed budget, over our current budget. So, we've done the red pencil, we've gone back and forth, and used ARPA money and the amount of fifty thousand dollars to reduce the overall budget, to get it down where we're comfortable. I don't know if you have a copy in front of you, but you'll see total expenses and total revenue, both at, of course, one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And at this point, that is the proposed municipal budget to be presented at town meeting day on March sixth. So at this point, this is the last. Okay, I can read out anything you need. Three parts of the budget, which I'm sure you're aware of by now. The administration, the infrastructure, and public safety. One of the things under infrastructure is a lot of times people associate that with the town highway budget, but the infrastructure budget actually goes on and includes other community infrastructure expenses, with the recreation program for Barstool Youth, the Rutland Free Library, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Menden Historical Society, and the Rutland County Tax. And the other thing not directly related to highway is the town office bond, both the principal and the interest. And public safety budget is pretty much all explanatory. We've gone over the reasons for why law enforcement income has been reduced by eight thousand dollars. And so, everything is right on the front page on your budget summary. Both our revenue and expenses, and then underneath is the, the budget history. So you have anything else you want to change? So you have anything else you want to change here? All right. So are you good at this point, Seth, up to date?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to forward the 2023-2024 Municipal Budget in the amount of $1,295,460 to be presented at town meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have a budget to forward. Town, next one under F is town meeting. Location, setup, cleanup, and supplies. Okay, again. Our town meeting is March 7, 2023, is at the V Trans Building at 61 Valley View here in Mendon. So that's our location. The setup and cleanup. Sarah, I'm going to let you start on that one. We need volunteers for that.
Sarah, I just want to clarify that.
Go ahead.
The town meeting is actually Wednesday, March 6. And voting is March 7. This is a Tuesday.
You're right. And I'm just reading our warning.
The town warning?
Yeah. So our warning says town meeting, annual meeting, March 7?
No, that's correct. So town meeting is actually March 7. Our informational meeting is the night before that, on March 6.
Okay, okay, March 6, starting at 6:00 PM. Again, it's at the V Trans Building at 61 Valley View. As I mentioned earlier, that's opposite the beginning of the west end of the Mendon Mountain Apple Orchard. We know that the chairs are there, tables are there. They need to be set up. And then at the end, I'm sure we'll be tracking in something we should clean up. They are not open the next day to do that. The only other thing we probably don't think we'll need, we should have with us, is a P A system, which I understand is upstairs. I just have never heard confirmation anyone's ever located it. All right, anything else on that, Sarah?
No, we'll just be looking for three to four volunteers to help set up and.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll, it'll be easy to get.
I'd like to reach for access to the building with V Trans staff. And again, we want to think of putting into the building.
Yes, absolutely.
I also spoke with podcasts out below, and we're welcome to additional parking.
Great, because we probably will need that. Okay, we're down to G. Dedication of the town report. Usually, we dedicate that to individual or individuals each year. At this point, I've come up with two. That can be a joint dedication. And in no particular order, the first one would be our entire staff. They've had a difficult year, to say the least, of disruption and harassment. And they're still here. They have put in a very difficult year. So I'm putting that forward for dedication. And the second one is the BCA, Board of Civil Authority, made up of the justices of the peace and members of the select board. I don't even have the time to calculate how many hundreds of hours they put into that, doing site visits at their own expense, writing up reports, coming back in to do the hearings, follow-ups, wrap-up meetings. And the whole process was time-consuming and it wasn't an easy challenge. And at the same point, BCA members, by doing their civic duty, give up their right to appeal. And there might have been individuals who wanted to appeal their own assessment but gave that up in order to fulfill their duty to serve on the BCA. So that's my two, kind of doing both. And I'll throw it out for further discussion.
So Larry, I do have one individual that will be not seeking reappointment to a position here in Mendon that I would also like to throw into consideration and maybe not make that known publicly, but to the individual member to get their feedback. And my two cents is that I full-heartedly support the BCA dedication as I've watched the many hours that they put in.
All right, that's still open for discussion?
I agree with both. I know the amount of hours that the BCA put in. And I do know how much work and how dedicated our staff is through all sorts of situations. So I do think they're both great.
And then, okay, I'm sorry. For staff, that's both our administration and our road crew, who have gone through another year, shorthanded. Seth, you up to speed on dedications?
Absolutely, Larry.
Okay. So Sarah, we'll get in touch with the other one. And at this point, our dedication would be to all of our staff and to the members of the BCA.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then just for the town report too, there's highlights and objectives reports that I'll be writing and emailing each of you for comment. And I can rush on some of these subjects as well in that report.
Okay. That's done. And well, we're down to our town meeting warning, which we need to sign. Val and I will sign it now, Seth. And when you get a chance, come into the office and we need your signature on it.
You're doing a better opening than I did.
All right, so I'll just go down through and read this so that we know what's on the warning. The warning. Town of Mendon Annual Meeting, March 7, 2023, V Trans Building, 61 Valley View, Mendon, Vermont. Legal voters of the town in Mendon are hereby notified and warned to meet at the V Trans Office Building on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM to transact all business except Article 11. The meeting will adjourn until March 7, 2023, at 8:00 AM at the Mendon Town Office to vote by Australian ballot on Article 11. Voting will close at 7:00 PM. Article 1, shall the town authorize a select board set the rate of compensation for non-salried employees at town and town officers appointed midterm. Article 2, shall the town vote to approve the 2023-2024 Municipal Budget at $1,295,460. Article 3, shall the town vote to create a community center reserve fund and appropriate $10,000. Article 4, shall the town appropriate $1,500 for the support of A R C Rutland Area Serving Citizens and developmental, with developmental disabilities to advocate for the rights of individuals with disabilities. Article 5, shall the town appropriate $1,200 for the support of the Maroon Valley Regional Transit District, the bus, for public transportation for men and residents, visitors, and surrounding communities. Article 6, shall the town appropriate $700 for the support of the R S V P Retired Senior Volunteer Program, which allows older Americans the opportunity to apply their life experience to help meet community needs. Article 7, shall the town appropriate $1,242 for the support of Rutland Mental Health Services, formerly Rutland Area Community Services, to ensure early intervention in mental health treatment and support as needed. Article 8, shall the town appropriate $2,600 for the support of V N A and hospice of the Southwest Region to provide services when in-home care is needed. Article 9, shall the town appropriate $600 for the support of the Southwest Council on Aging to be a community force in creating and sustaining opportunities for elders and caregivers. Article 10, shall the town appropriate $2,500 for the support of Wonder Feet Kids Museum to foster curiosity, the exploration, inspiring creativity, and igniting the imagination of children to the power of play. Article 11, to elect the following town officers. Town moderator for a one-year term. Select board member for two years to complete a three-year term. Select board member for a three-year term. Dated at Mendon, Vermont, on this 23rd day of January 2023 by the select board members of the town of Mendon. So I like the motion to approve the Town of Mendon warning, annual meeting warning, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Seth. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Need more, you passed, mine died. Motion carries.
I just wanted to let you know that we didn't receive any petitions for articles for reappropriation. All of those appropriated articles are from funded last year.
Okay, thank you. Whoop, get that back to you. Yeah, moving on. The V L C T Safety Grant Application for Cyber Security. That is a request from Nancy. It's in here.
Well, this safety grant is all we received one of the last year. It has their, the L C T has approved 100% funding, so it does not have a match. And what this grant application will do is hire a consultant to establish what our needs are for the town with cyber security so that we know better what we need to do, which will circle back to the ARPA funds and let us know how much we need requesting under ARPA funds to secure this as well as what our needs for the future ongoing costs will be annually to keep up with the technologies moving forward to protect the gentleman.
Okay, the total amount of the application request is $14,306.35.
That's for the cybersecurity. That is, where did you get that from?
At the very bottom of page 1 of 1.
Okay, so that's only on security grants? That's not?
Oh, all right, let me just grab this.
Yep, sorry about that. So we don't know exactly how much this grant amount will be for, but we don't, we're looking at the $2,000 to $3,000 number range. We just want to be authority from the select board to move forward and submit an application.
All right, so we're back to the Vermont, grabbing the public safety. My apologies for that one, Homeland Security Unit. And we need a motion to, to sign the V L C T Safety Grant Application for Cyber Security.
Okay, so no, that, yeah, that is a different application than what is on the agenda right here. That's the subject that we added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Homeland Security Grant.
This line item, both of them have to do with that for security. So that's where the confusion is coming from.
Yes.
This grant is a V L C T Safety Grant, which a technical expense is to apply for funds with this cap in determining what they will need for cybersecurity protections. The grant that we have added to the agenda, which we'll talk about, you can add as the next subject displayed, is an application that we apply for replacement of computers, laptops, a shredder, and a projector that they requested, and that's for Homeland Security. And they requested some supplemental information in which we prepared it for box edits and we'd like to resubmit that grant, which helps pay for computer upgrades and anti-terrorism preparations.
All right, so let's start with the V L C T Safety Grant Application for Cyber Security. I'll make a motion to sign that.
So you'd make a motion to authorize the town to apply for that grant? Because the application has not been prepared yet.
All right, we'll just see, so moved?
Okay.
Let me just.
And I'll second that.
All right, so Sarah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
Now, if we can talk about the Homeland Security Cyber Security Grant.
You said this was a reapplication?
This is providing additional information from an application that was submitted at the, in the middle of December.
Who was leaning, right?
We signed it at the first meeting in December. And they sent an email after their review. They sent an email requesting additional information.
Okay.
Which we already provided in the cover letter that Larry has. And because it's an additional cost of, Larry, you have that number right in front of me, like $100 and some odd dollars. We prepared the grant application with that increased amount for them to hopefully improve.
Okay, thank you.
And the changes between the two grants was a further estimate on a very specific law enforcement laptop to be able to use in the cruiser.
Okay.
And the second thing was a FEMA-approved shredder. We were unaware that there was a list of shredders that we had to choose from in order to destroy documents that had sensitive information.
Okay.
So those are the changes.
The amendment is in the amount of $147.93
Correct.
From the original application.
Yeah. So we just want to approve Larry signing that supplemental application to the Homeland Security Grant.
All right, make a motion for the chair to sign the Homeland Security. All right, make a motion for the chair to sign the Homeland Security Supplemental Grant. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And so Larry, I just wanted to point out there are two places for you to sign. The letter and then the actual cover page of the application.
Correct.
Thank you. And then Nancy Nando will sign that as well as our financial officer.
The last thing on our agenda is the constable training and hourly compensation, which Sarah sent us a long email on.
Do you want me to provide an overview over?
If not, I can read, I can read what you gave us, it'll be easier.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. So we are at J under Business. It's Constable Training and Hourly Compensation. Constable Training and Hourly Compensation. Lemmy Carter is requesting to attend an advanced training at a cost of $850. The public safety budget has constable training at $500. The additional $350 would be taken from continuing education. Lemmy is not requesting additional expenses to reimburse, for example, the hotel and ammunition. I requested Lemmy provide his description of the course, and this is his information, excuse me. Requesting additional $350 in funds to attend advanced level training specifically focused on tactical movement within buildings. It builds off previous training, which was extremely applicable to active shooter situations, unfortunately circling back to the tragedy at Uvalde School, that went from an active shooter to a hostage situation. This training builds off the previous shifting phone focus to hostage situations and rescue applications. From the previous training, I already gained, I already gained a lot of information that it felt was immediate applicable, as I presented considerations to Barstow to enhance their security posture, was able to speak about what a police response would look like during an armed intruder situation, provided staff with guidance on what to tell the children to expect and am currently scheduled to go to speak with the children. These trainings provide a unique way of looking at things that most people can't. I would like to point out, the Barstow staff was extremely impressed at the wealth of knowledge and suggestions that I was able to immediately present during a walk around the building. To further enhance school safety, I also take the knowledge and share it with other law enforcement agencies, as very few have been able to attend these advanced trainings. This training that I am asking to attend, I am not aware of any other law enforcement personnel in the county that have attended it. This will allow for the continuing sharing of information with other agencies, all of whom are likely responders to Barstow and the unfortunate thought of there being an armed intruder. This also increases the capability of a response to any other schools within the county. As it's something I truly feel is critical, I am only asking for tuition to be paid. Lodging food and required ammunition will be paid by me, again, just as I gladly did at the previous training. Not as obviously or immediately relevant, but these trainings also present enormous networking potential. It creates connections within different agencies across the U.S. The training last year held officers from as far as California. Further provides direct contacts with manufacturers, think grant opportunities, and discounted pricing. Most impressively, it opens connections with federal training opportunities and points of contact that benefit to the wide interaction and different perspectives. It is, allows sharing of what different locations are doing, what has worked, plus what's being charged, and why. This creates proactive momentum, especially within our community, instead of waiting possibly years for Vermont as a whole to view things a certain way. Okay. That more than covers everything. So, in the end.
I believe Lemmy is still on the line. If you guys have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. He is. God, what had, Lemmy read it. Did I leave anything out, Lemmy?
I read every. I've all got it from I hope that's the best I could do from myself home to get the email over.
Yeah, I saw him, and I tried to go around him, so.
So Lemmy, could you tell us when the, when the training is still working?
It is scheduled in August, however, it may not hold it very often, and it builds up extremely fast. The next one is actually scheduled for April, and it is then full then last September, I believe it was.
So I just received a little bit more information regarding kind of the cash flow and the budgeting from Nancy before the meeting. So from, from your constable training budget for the fifth school year of '23 that we're in right now, the $500 is actually paid for the last class? And so is the previous budget going to be available again until November, or I mean, April I heard? But I do want to reiterate that Lemmy has to register early in order to, like this training isn't until August, but if he's got to register in August, he will, he will not be able to register for the class. So just to follow along with the continuing education budget, Nancy reported that there is $1,172 left in that budget between now and June 30th. So the, the $850 we need to come out of that budget now, there is some requirement or some need for those funds in order to save some funds to train, to provide training opportunities for our new select board members? If they choose to receive training as new select board members, like there's a select board institute provided by V L C T annually right after, you know, soon after town meeting in April, so we will, let's say some funds, there'll be some demand on those funds for that as well. But it looks like we have, you know, enough funds to fund the $850 out of the continuing education budget and keeping the remaining $400 for, for select board training.
And I do realize that it would be coming out of the money for next year, and it's this weird timing thing where I don't know the way to step away from that, and that's why I wanted to.
If, if the select board found a need for additional training funds, they could, they could utilize maybe some of the constable training for the next year's budget for continuing education.
100% fully expect that the training budget, if it's approved for this coming year to be used, that needs to basically replace the funds that I have to afford now.
Yeah, that's an accounting thing that we can actually give out too, whether there could be a approval.
So are we still at the point? Am I totally confused here, they're asking for an additional $350, or is that?
Well, because of the timing, you are going to spend right now the $850 out of the continuing education fund, which has a balance of $1,172. That's cool, and that includes the budget.
So we're good on this one, or what is the actual motion at this point?
You just have to approve the expense coming out of the continuing education budget versus the constable training budget. And then, again, even though the training isn't going to happen until the next fiscal year, he's got to spend it out of this fiscal year in order to register early. So that's why we're coming to you.
Right.
To ask for that approval, because it's coming, you know, it's crafting fiscal year, so he actually needs approval to spend $850 out of the continuing education budget.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, a motion to approve the expense of the continuing education budget, and that's in the amount of $850?
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else? I've got something to put in Terry Crisell's box, and I'll send her an email, because we have an energy committee, they may be interested in energy resiliency funding for municipalities. And this is going through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. The deadline is January 27, 2023.
Okay, I just want to circle back to the constable training and hourly compensation. So one of Lemmy's other requests is to start doing patrols through the state grant program, because our law enforcement, our law enforcement staff budget is accounted for with, is paid for the county share contract through our law enforcement budget. But Lemmy would like to start working with, under some state grant, with the Governor Tyree safety program to do patrols, I mean correctly, if I'm wrong with any of it, to start doing patrols to Mendon in coordination with some regional efforts. In order to do that, he would need the select board to set an hourly rate of compensation. So how much we would pay them, and then we would get reimbursed under grant funds.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that is nothing at all. Mostly at this point, I just, if nothing else, I wanted it on the select board radar, so they can possibly review the V L C T breakdowns of his idea, and we've been talking the stuff that later day I just wanted to put on company, but I think through a drive.
Okay. All right, so we're of this, and we don't need it.
You're not looking for a decision.
No, not right now.
I don't think I'm prepared to come out of the woodwork without getting my head up or any chance to do any research, because maybe they just think what I'm asking is insulting, or I'm, you know, outgoing to departments, so they're not having any time to threaten check numbers around the area, so I think it's a personal issue.
Very good. So we're up to date on that. Anything else before we adjourn? Yes, I don't hear anything else. Seth, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I don't think I'm going to be able to.
You want to second that now?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned at, at 7:06. Thank you, everyone.